Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council, our first meeting of the year. And before we get started this evening, we have an introduction. And Captain Ferretta, would you do that, please?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Officer Warren Edmondson. He was just sworn in here last Monday, and he's a 1992 graduate of Xenia High School. He is enlisted in the United States Navy in September of 92 and served two years before his honorable discharge in 94. He's completed the Basic Peace Officer Training Academy at Green County Criminal Justice Training Academy in September of '06, where he's received his commission. And he joined the Miami County Sheriff's Office as a deputy sheriff in September of '07, where his most recent position was a school resource officer in the Milton Union K-12 Schools and the Bethel Local K-12 Schools. He's received several awards and commendations while he was at the Sheriff's Office, and Deputy of the Year from the Miami County Sheriff's Office, a Certificate of Merit and Life Saving Award from the Buckeye State Sheriff's Association, and a recognition from the Ohio Senate. So it is my pleasure to introduce to you Officer Warren Edmondson.
Welcome.
Thank you guys very much for the opportunity to be able to come to the city. A great city, actually, growing up down the street, always in competition with Beaver Creek for everything. However...
We better keep that trophy.
However, you know, it's great. My wife and my children, it was a great move, a great decision, and, once again, I can't say how blessed I am to be here, to have this opportunity halfway through my career. Obviously, you kind of don't know if these decisions are going to be something that you want to take on, but I'm very, very happy and pleased to be here, and I really do feel like this is a great fit for me and my family. And, once again, thank you, and I will definitely do the city proud and, you know, do the people in the city proud as well. So, thank you very much, and have a great night. Thanks again.
Well, thank you. All right, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales. Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Rushing.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. And we don't have any excused appearances, so will you all rise and join me in the pledge, please, in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll remain standing for just a moment, please, and being this is our first meeting of the year, and we have some new council members that I hope, over the months to come, that you'll keep us in mind and guide us in how you want us to guide our city. So, thank you. We have an agenda before us this evening. Are there any changes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. We have two sets of minutes to approve this evening. The first is November 23rd, 2019, a regular meeting. Any discussion?
So moved. Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted for the November 23rd regular scheduled meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion still carries. Thank you. Next is the December 14th regular scheduled, a regular meeting. And any discussion on the minutes?
So moved. Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted for December, the December 14th meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Same.
We have three abstentions? Then we can't, we can't, that did not get enough to...
Well, there's got to be a way around that.
There is, there is. Effectively, if a member of council has read the minutes and feels comfortable to vote on the, because what you're voting on is basically the accuracy what was reported. Not that, doesn't necessarily say that you had to be there. Normally, we do abstain, but I think in this particular situation, we'll never get past three, unfortunately, so if any member who voted to abstain would feel comfortable, then we'd be, pass it.
Is there one of the three abstentions comfortable?
I would feel comfortable.
Okay. So can I simply ask for a new motion?
That's what I would do.
Okay. So do I have a new motion on the minutes for December 14th?
So moved. Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted for December 14th. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing, A-19-1.
This is an application filed by Monica S. Donahue and William D. Sheeman, 3971 Labonte Drive, Beaver Creek, Ohio 45431, appealing a decision of the Beaver Creek Board of Zoning Appeals in case CU-19-1 approving permission to construct a wireless, a new wireless telecommunications tower in adjacent equipment building as per Charter, Chapter 158.130B of the City of Beaver Creek zoning code in an A-1 district. This is a replacement of a wireless telecommunications facility that was destroyed in the Memorial Day tornado. The property is located at the western end of Graham Drive, further described as Book 1, Page 6, Parcel 9, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. All right, this time, the applicant has 15 minutes to make a presentation. It can be one, or it can be multiple individuals, but if it's more than, you know, when you do come up to the podium, we need your name and address, please. But the total presentation from the appellant, I'm sorry, not applicant, from the appellant is going first, is 15 minutes. So is the appellant ready?
Yes.
Please come forward. Please give us a name and address, please.
My name is Bill Sheeman, William D. Sheeman. I live at 3971 Labonte Road, Beaver Creek, Ohio. I want to spend the first 30 seconds thanking the mayor and the council for granting a continuance. As you know, this was scheduled in December, and we had a family member hospitalized for an extended period of time out of state, and we couldn't get back. So, thank you for your consideration for moving this on. I'm going to stick with our application of administrative appeal. In that application, Part 1, we had to state the basis for the appeal, and in Part B, we had to state the facts. The first basis of the appeal is during the BZA hearing on November 13th, the applicant provided false or misleading information to the BZA board members. The most serious of this false information, I believe, was the attorney for the applicant stated multiple times that American Tower would only receive reimbursement from their insurance company if a like-for-like tower was constructed. Under detailed and direct questioning by BZA members, they went back to that point several times saying, because it didn't sound correct. It sounded like, you know, he was representing on the face that no payment would be made except if a lattice-type cell tower went up. He continued to say American Tower would be out-of-pocket if they built a monopole at least four times during that hearing. I have a copy of the only communication we've received from American Tower Corporation dated November 5, 2019, which states in the next-to-last paragraph, "American Tower's insurance policy will cover only up to the value of the asset that was lost, resulting in a substantial out-of-pocket expenditure for American Tower." This statement directly conflicts with what he told the BZA members. This letter, signed by real estate project manager for American Cell Tower, Sarah Snell. The way the zoning appeals meeting was conducted, I did not have a chance to refute or to introduce this at that meeting. The public meeting was held first after the representative for American Tower, Mr. Aiman, presented these points of view. He's an attorney. I tried to get back to the podium. I raised my hand, but the chair of the BZA meeting said the public hearing was closed. I could have been called back to the podium. It's my understanding, under the rules, if a member of the BZA had said, "I see Mr. Sheeman has his hand up, I'd like to hear what he has to say," or if they would have asked me a question. But I couldn't get back. I couldn't present this evidence. The second point of misleading information presented during that hearing by Mr. Aiman, I may be pronouncing his name wrong, I don't know if he's here tonight, I didn't see him in the audience, was he continued on multiple occasions to equate the cell tower, the loss of the cell tower, to a shed going down in the neighborhood, or a garage destroyed. Cell tower is not a shed. It's not a garage. A cell tower is a piece of commercial infrastructure. It's completely in a different asset class than a privately-owned shed or garage that was damaged and is going to be rebuilt on a foundation. When you, when commercial infrastructure is lost for any reason, fire, natural disaster, you don't waive zoning requirements for the rebuilding of commercial infrastructure. Commercial infrastructure is meant to last and last, and you don't grandfather in highways, bridges, roads, sewer systems, cell towers, power lines, you don't grandfather them in from current zoning requirements. You can do it for a property owner on a shed, but, and you can do it in a case of maybe a foundation on a garage for a property owner that doesn't meet the current side yard or rear yard setback. But commercial infrastructure, again, I wanted to come back when I heard the discussion and arguments going in the, in the direction of sheds, but I didn't have a chance to come back. Your, besides the attorney asking for the variance, your planning department, Mr. Burkett, also came to the podium and equated the situation to a shed or a foundation on a garage. My opinion is, he was wrong to do so. There was no discussion, there was no information about the difference between a shed or rebuilt residential garage and what is commercial infrastructure. So, I think that covers my R, Point 1 under the basis. Point 2 under the basis in application for administrative appeal is the lack of documentation from the applicant. There is no technical documentation from the applicant. We have this letter written by a project manager who, the attorney referred to the project manager as "a registered person," quote/unquote. I don't know what a registered person is. A registered person isn't a licensed civil engineer. It isn't, this person who signed this letter isn't a licensed civil engineer. The person who signed the letter isn't an officer of the company. So, we don't have any documentation. The City of Beaver Creek hasn't been given any documentation signed by a person at a level in the company which could be held accountable for misrepresentation of the facts. We've got simply a letter from a project manager, not a civil engineer, not an officer of the company. And, and on top of that, they know the decision of the BZA is being appealed. They have a copy of the appeal. Yet today, I checked in the zoning department, they have not forwarded anything to answer the appeal. They haven't forwarded any information, detailed information about the site. We don't even know whether or not the foundation that's there is sound or not. We have no detailed engineering. We're taking their word for the fact that they'll be able to reconstruct a lattice tower on that site. The whole argument is simply about holding them to the standard of the current zoning, which is for a monopole tower, and they don't want to spend the money building a new platform for it. Okay, the third item under the basis is their claim that a like-for-like rebuilding of what was blown down by the tornado meets the standard for practical difficulty. That's a legal term. Mr. McHugh is a better expert on practical difficulty than I am, but because he essentially distilled their application, if you watch the video, he distilled their application to an argument of practical difficulty. So, I have some background in zoning, and so I have heard that before, so I educated myself. The practical difficulty standard actually goes back to a decision of the Ohio Supreme Court. They're known as the Duncan factors now, but I have brought a copy. I don't know, you know, whether it's worth handing you over the exact copy, because we don't have time to read it, but basically, practical difficulty as defined in the, as defined in the decision of the Ohio Supreme Court in 1986, sets out seven criteria that are reasonable to be used in judging practical difficulty. And those criteria are not met by the applicant, in my opinion. And I'm sure you'll have questions for Mr. McHugh about that, especially if you look at Criteria Number 1 and Number 7 in the decision of the Ohio Supreme Court. They are not met by the applicant. The applicant never claimed a hardship, and the, and in the letter, in the letter, the only communication, written communication we have, they don't even claim a practical difficulty. They just say, "Monopole is infeasible," quote/unquote. In summary, American Tower respectfully requests this board to grant the variance to rebuild a like-for-like structure. The residents in my neighborhood and in Garden View have to look at this tower every day, the rebuilt tower. The reason your zoning was upgraded to require monopole towers is because the public sees monopole towers as, if you're going to have a cell tower, it's better than a lattice tower. I have a thumb drive, can we, these are the same pictures that I showed at the BZA hearing, so I'm not introducing additional information. Can we, can we show this to the, just to demonstrate to council what we're looking So, cell tower pictures, and let's go to the, all right, great. All right, so, cell tower pictures. Go up here to this folder, this mouse is...
Might be a little closer.
All right, and let's go down to lattice. This is an example of a lattice cell tower. This is lattice tower, it's generally a three-sided, three-sided figure. They're cheaper to construct. If I were in the cell tower business, I'd want to put these things up also. They are cheap to construct, and they have the additional benefit of lots of attachment points. This is a nice, clean lattice tower with only one layer of elements. Okay, let me go back. Okay, let me go back. Here's an example of a lattice tower. I remember I said lots of attachment points. You can put, hang anything you want on a lattice tower within reason, within reason. This is a lattice tower in, already near the neighborhood where we live. Let me go over here. There's a monopole. You can see them everywhere. The reason monopoles are coming in now is, my, my career was in telecommunications. I worked in the network side for 30 years. When cellular networks first came in, when cellular networks first came in, they were highly regulated.
We're down to about a minute, sir, so just...
Okay. When cellular networks first came in, they were highly regulated by the FCC. After they got established, the FCC relaxed the regulation of local municipalities to zone them. After the relaxation, local municipalities were able, like you did, to put in monopole. It isn't an option, it's in your zoning as a requirement. Also camouflage towers. If you've ever been, traveled widely, you've seen towers that look like trees, palm trees, things like this. This is allowed now. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, in summary, I want you to decide for your neighbors, okay? I want you to decide for us, and overturn the decision, please.
Thank you. All right, is the applicant present this evening, like to make a presentation? Same conditions, you can have as many people talk as you wish, but the time limit is 15 minutes, please.
Thank you very much.
Give us a name and address, please.
Greg Wagner, on behalf of American Tower. I want, my business address is 1000 Jackson Street, Toledo, Ohio 43604. Good evening, Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and the rest of the council. American Tower is here this evening requesting that the decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals be upheld. I think it's important to provide context. Prior to the decision of the boarding, of the Board of Zoning Appeals, the staff likewise recommended the construction of, the replacement of the tower that was damaged in the tornado with a like tower. And that's because it fundamentally goes to fairness. As we all know, this tower was damaged as a result of the tornado that took place. Every structure that was replaced in that, in that area, every non-conforming structure, the local community, Beaver Creek, allowed that to proceed. American Tower is only requesting for that same type of consideration. This, if you look at the zoning code and specifically section 158.172H4C, it talks about a destruction of at least 60% of the existing structure. Here, there's no question that the entire structure was damaged. And just responding very quickly to the appellant's comments, the, that section does not differentiate between types, the types of structure. It very clearly covers the, all types of structures. And here, there is no question that this was a compelling reason. Mr. McHugh prepared a memorandum that is contained within your packet, in which he reads, decides as a matter of law that this tornado resulted in a compelling reason to allow American Tower to replace the tower with the existing lattice-like tower. I think it's also important to note that a lattice-like tower is consistent with the tower that is, one of the towers that is already in the area that was shown just before to you by the photograph. I'd also like to respond to the allegation regarding the insurance, and I'd just like to be clear that the insurance issue is that American Tower would not be reimbursed for coverage that, for a cost that exceeds the current tower. We estimate that that would be approximately $100,000, although we do not know that exact number for sure. If you look at the letter that was submitted to the BZA prior to the hearing, it very clearly describes the nature of the insurance coverage and the cost or potential cost to American Tower. I don't believe there's any, certainly no intent to mislead the BZA, and I don't believe that ultimately the BZA relied on what was said at the hearing. And I believe that Mr. Amin, who is not a licensed lawyer, who is a consultant, accurately described what the coverage was at that meeting. And I think that what the BZA did is they relied on Mr. McHugh's opinion, the recommendation from the staff, and went with that. I think it's also important to note that there were two separate BZA meetings in which this issue was discussed at length. So, again, we, American Tower, requests fairness, that they be treated similar to the other property owners or individuals with property rights in the area, and be able to replace the tower that was there with a similar 164-foot lattice tower.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If you're finished, thank you very much. All right, at this point, it's public input. Three minutes per person. You may have two others, up to two others volunteer time if they need. So is there anyone here this evening that would like to address council on this issue? Please come forward. Give a name and address, please, and then you have three minutes.
My name is Corey, 2408 Rollingview Avenue, Beaver Creek, Ohio 45431. Listening to his application, he said that all homeowners in the neighborhood were all given the opportunity to rebuild their structures as-is, where-is, which is not true at all. The, I've come down twice and talked to the city planning and zoning department, they will not allow me to rebuild my garage where, as it sits right now. So I, as a homeowner, am going to have to spend additional money to move the garage to within current zoning, because I cannot build it, even with the foundation, as it sits. So, that, at that point right there, I think, sorry, I took, took a few notes, I wonder. He's also saying the structure was completely destroyed, so if it was completely destroyed, that, and my assumption would include the foundation, so then if they have to rebuild a new foundation, they should then have to rebuild within current zones, because I remember at one of the previous meetings, if your foundation was still good from the tornadoes, then you could rebuild on the current foundation. So, his comment was, it was a 100% destroyed, which the foundation is part of it. My third point is, another time I've talked to the zoning department... My third point is, another time I've talked to the zoning department, they said having to spend additional money on my part is not a valid reason for an appeal, because it is not the city's responsibility for, because I have to spend more money to do the current zones. My garage, according to estimates, is supposed to cost $75,000 to replace, but my insurance didn't cover anywhere near that. But again, that's not the city council or the zoning department's fault. It is my responsibility to have adequate insurance coverage to replace it. So he's saying that their insurance coverage will cover up to what they had, but if they have to cover to current zones, they have to spend additional money, which in my opinion, I don't know why that's our problem, because they, I mean, that's not a valid reason for an appeal per your zoning department.
Okay, very good. May I have your name again, please?
It's Corey.
Corey.
What was your last name, please?
I would rather not, since this is a public hearing. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name's Randy Bryan. I live at 2423 Rolling View, right behind or in front of, whichever way you want to look at the tower. I look out my back window right now, I see the, the structure laying on the ground in a building next to it. I can just imagine what the tower's going to look like. Before, we had trees in our yard, there's trees in the land before that. Now, there's nothing, there's nothing in the whole neighborhood. So I was, the main thing I want to ask counsel is, is to look at it the way we have to look at it. You put a lattice tower up there, we're going to be looking at it for years. There's no way to cover it up by trees. If you've been through our neighborhood, most of the trees there are gone. People in the neighborhood are rebuilding. I myself had put probably an extra $10,000 in, in upgrading my landscape and in my home. And I know several other people in the neighborhood have done the same thing. So what I'm asking is that the cell tower put a little bit more of their money into making a tower that we could all like. I mean, they're going to build a tower, they're going to leave, we're never going to see them again. We have to live with it every day. We got to look out our back door, look at it. You drive down Grange Hall, you don't have to go back in our neighborhood to see it. You go down Grange Hall now, you can see the tower, which is several hundred yards behind it, so. All I'm asking counsel for to do is just to stick with the, with the zoning that it was intended to do, to, to make the Beaver Creek area and the neighborhoods look better. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Mr. McHugh?
If I could respond also, what I would suggest is...
I would suggest let all the public speak, and then certainly, then to the extent that...
Well, we had the opportunity to respond, because during the other hearings, they had the last voice of what was going on. We had no reason or no way to respond.
Let's get through this section of public hearing, and then we'll decide. Thank you.
Good evening, Beaver Creek City Council. My name is Sammy O'Brien. I also live at 2423 Rolling View Avenue. My property, like I said, 2423, it's off of Grange Hall, and it borders where this tower's being built. And as we all know, the Memorial Day tornadoes took out majority of the trees in our neighborhood. It's unrecognizable. If you've been there before and haven't been in years, you would, you would think it's a completely different place. For years, obviously, the trees covered the tower, but that's not really the case anymore. I took a video from different altitudes in my backyard with my drone to show how visible the tower will be to the entire area. And at 25 feet, it is visible to the entire neighborhood. At 50 feet, it can be seen by the apartments in the Spicer Heights area and the neighborhood south of the tower, where Plainview and Rustic View is. And at 100 feet, it can be seen by the Gardenview neighborhood to the north. And as my dad mentioned, we were told before that trees will be planted around the base of the new lattice tower, but that's not going to make a difference. It's going to take forever for those trees to grow. The monopole tower is obviously, like Bill said, is up to code. It looks better than the lattice style. And as somebody from the neighborhood who has to look at this every day, I ask that you go with the appeal with that decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak this night, this evening? No one? In that case, we'll close the public hearing, and I think what we're going to do when it comes to any rebuttals, it'll be up to council members to ask a question of somebody if they want to hear what they have to say, okay? All right, so we move on. It is council time for council input, so we'll start. Councilmember Bales, would you like to start off?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have a few questions regarding the case. I guess I'd like to know, perhaps from staff or the tower company, about the two temporary towers that are presently located on the site. How tall are they? Just to put into perspective what's there now compared to what's been, being built. And I'd like to know about the foundation, if there's been any work done to evaluate the foundation, to see if it's structurally sound. And then I have a couple of questions for staff as well, so. I don't know if you want me to do them one at a time, or...
I can respond to the questions directed towards American Tower, or perhaps staff.
The, the replacement tower that is there currently is approximately 100 feet. It is not as tall as the tower that would be built early, to fully replace the old tower. The tower that was shown in the photograph that you viewed earlier is approximately 164 feet, so that is the approximate site. The, the current foundation, we have evaluated that it is undamaged and can be replaced, or we can utilize that by, with the existing lattice, with the new lattice tower. If we had to put a monopole, we would have to evaluate the soil. That requires a significantly different foundation. Thank you.
Thank you. For staff, perhaps you couldn't address the issue that Corey brought up about his zoning?
Just as a general statement, we have worked with the homeowners in order to allow for instances where non-conforming structures were torn down to be rebuilt. Unfortunately, in this case, if I recall correctly, the garage is on somebody else's property, so we don't even have the authority to prove it, to be replaced as-is, because it's not on the, solely on the homeowner's property.
Yeah, I, I was asked by planning staff about that, in an effort to look at if there was any way, but because it is, at some, for whatever reason, it was constructed across into the other person's property line, so the foundation is technically already across encroaching, so. But the suggestion was that, is that the owner of the garage apply to the BZA and certainly make a request for some potential allowances as to the, where the new, new one would be built, but that will have to go to the BZA for that. That was a suggestion to try to resolve this for him.
Mr. McGrath, did, did the city have a written policy with regard to structures that were damaged with the tornado, and how they were going to be handled when they come and apply?
Absolutely. Yeah, we did, we put out a, a packet to people that were affected, that said, you know, we'd come in anytime without any fees associated with the permits, and that we would expedite those. And then we did ask legal counsels to what the, the effects of the non-conforming structure, and we were advised that they could be within certain parameters, obviously, on your property. If it encroached, if there was a concrete apron that was five feet off the property line, we would allow them to build the shed back on that, on that concrete area, but, because there really is no way to determine exactly when the permits were issued, whether it was in compliance at the time that they built it. But unfortunately, this, Corey's case is a little unique, but we did have a written policy on how that worked.
Do you know how many applicants we've had, applications we've had, that don't comply with our current zoning?
No, I, I think we've had, last count, maybe 108 permits for tornadoes related to tornado damage. I would say there's less than five that would have an issue with the conform, with, with either rebuilding it to meet the current standards, or had some, some kind of situation on their property that they were not in compliance, but I would say it was less than a handful.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have for now.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rushing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To staff, does the zoning code differentiate non-conforming structures in terms of the process to go about if they were to be damaged? It was mentioned that, you know, trying to differentiate versus various, the various types of structures, but does our code define that?
Our code just has a non-conforming section that says if a property, if a structure's been destroyed more than 60%, that it be rebuilt to meet code. But that was something that we're going to amend in our zoning code to, to be more compliant with, with legal counsel has told us in terms of structural damages, I mean, from a natural disaster, that doesn't necessarily apply. So we will change our zoning code, which we're going through that process right now, to make sure that that does exempt natural disasters. But there is, there is a language in there right now.
Thank you. That's all I have right now.
All right. Councilmember Garcia.
Yeah, thank you. Just stay there. So I have a couple of questions for you regarding the zoning for commercial infrastructure. After the tornado, did the BZA or did city approve any conditional use for businesses? I know that they mentioned sheds and fences for personal property, but was there anything for businesses that was allowed to be built under old zoning ordinances?
Not particularly the conditional use part of it, but we did have, if you were rebuilding as it was previously approved for a commercial, because a lot of those were in planning development, so like Mike's car wash, for example, they were, we approved theirs through an incidental modification, because they did have some changes, obviously. They retrofitted a car wash into a former, a different business's car wash, they kind of want to make this new one their own. So we did an incidental modification for that process, but if they built it, if they built it like it was previously approved, then we just issued them affirmative.
Okay. All right, as far as changing the ordinance from the lattice to requiring all towers be monopoles, what was the reasoning behind that? Was there a performance issue, were there safety issues? Is it anything other than aesthetics for the reason for switching over to the monopole structure?
You know, I don't know, I think mostly it was driven by the aesthetics of it, you know, the space that it would occupy. But, you know, some of the new monopoles were pretty typical being installed, so we kind of went with that, and they were all, obviously, there was a little bit better design for the collapse, if it were to collapse on itself, as opposed to fall straight over. But there was mostly aesthetics in terms of the, of the lattice versus monopole.
Would it put us at some kind of technical disadvantage if we have the lattice structure as opposed to the monopole?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right. I think those are all my questions for staff, but I do have a question for the applicant, if you don't mind coming back up. So the one question I had was, in your letter in November, it stated that this was fully investigated by your company, and it was determined those three points mainly that it would cost $100,000 over what insurance would cover. Can you describe a little bit about what "fully investigated" meant? I, I know that there's been, yes, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant applicant.
Sorry. Thank you. I didn't mean applicant. Thank you, Ryan. I think you tried to change that. Just mainly in the letter, it said, you know, "We fully investigated this." So what was the process of the investigation? Where did you pull this information? Because that's really what was used for the Board of Zoning Appeals to make some of its decisions.
Sure. We, a project manager who was responsible for the construction of, or would be responsible for the construction of the tower, investigated the location along with Mr. Amin, who had been president at the BZA meetings. And the project manager is responsible for all of the towers that American Tower has in, in this specific area, which is a significant amount. And they together determined that the, the platform was undamaged and can accommodate the lattice-type structure, but that the topography in the area required a change in the platform in order to accommodate the monopole-like structure. They have not done, specifically done sample soils yet to determine how they would have to modify that, but they have estimated that the cost would be at least $100,000. And I, that would be based on his experience in, in being involved in really all the towers in the area.
Has your company built monopole structures recently?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Have you built monopole structures recently?
American Tower has built monopole structures. I mean, they, each location is, is different, but certainly they've built monopole structures in, you know, in the United States. In this specific area, and specifically Beaver Creek, I don't believe they've built any monopole structures, but they have nationwide.
So they have that knowledge and foundation, then, to make the decision to determine what's needed in this specific location?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Curran.
Let me ask you a question here. What information do you have that you could share with counsel on the ability to withstand the size of the tornado that we had? Is there a difference between a monopole and this lattice work and its ability to be able to resist high winds?
I ca, I, I do not have the information to specifically provide whether this tornado, a monopole would have survived this tornado. I can tell you that American Tower builds lattice-type structures all over the nation, and they can, they comply with all of the regulations. I just can't tell you, sir, whether a monopole would have survived this tornado. I don't, I do not have that information.
I see. All right, thank you. Nothing more, Mayor. Flash Mayor Adam.
Thank you. I think most of my questions have been answered, but I did have, what's, what does it cost to build a monopole, if you're going to do that? Do you have that information, if just, if it was a new construction and you were going to do it?
We don't have that specific information, because each location changes. Here, for example, the topography, it's on a hill, we would have to significantly expand the location of the platform. It's based on the, the size of the platform. All I can tell you is that the project manager and consultants that have looked at it have estimated that it would be in excess of $100,000.
Now, do they use guy wires, or just as a standalone?
This, I believe this would be a standalone, but I, they would have to evaluate that after they evaluated the soil and do that. I don't think there's, there's not, they have not done that evaluation yet.
Okay. Yep, that's pretty much it for me.
Again, most of my questions have been discussed. I just wanted to clarify one little thing, and we keep, different people use the example of allowing a shed or a fence or a garage to be built, rebuilt. If it was a house, it would be rebuilt if it asked to be on the, under the own old zoning. We just, if you watch the most recent BZ, whoops, we can't go into that. But anyway, it, we issued a notice after the tornado that we would allow structures to be reconstructed as they previously existed. Now, that is not a building code, that is strictly a zoning code. Building Department, for some reason, the Building Department said it has to be because this doesn't meet building code. That's a whole different story. But we're talking strictly for zoning purposes. So we have three options tonight. We have the option to uphold the BZA ruling. We have the option to overturn the BZA ruling. And we have an option to remand this back to the BZA if you thought that there was more information that should be heard by the BZA. Is that correct, counsel?
Yes, you can do that.
Yes, Mayor.
So those are the things that we, the action we can take tonight. I don't believe we're even in, we're not in the position to even table this, are we? Any, this is something, if we, if there were questions that need to be answered, we would remand it back to the BZA. Does that sound accurate?
I, I think counsel probably could table if there was some, if, if there was some reason stated, you know, you truly needed some information, but generally, what happens in this process is really provided for in our rules is, is you confirm it, reverse it, modify it, or another alternative is, as you stated, Mayor, is to remand the case for further deliberation. Because you're right, if, if you're going to actually deliberate further with additional information...
It should go back, because...
It really probably should go back, if you really have some questions.
The appellant raised some interesting questions. Don't know that we, you know, if you're satisfied or not satisfied with the answers we received. If we're not satisfied with the answers, with answers we received to the concerns of the appellant, then that would... of a appellant, then that would be the, probably the best route would be to remand it back to the BZA. So, discussion.
I had questions, Mayor, about, I still, I've been reading a lot about the dynamics of these monopoles and these lattice works, and I, I go back to my question, which of course, sir, you were addressing, and that was, which one of these is more tornado-resistant? And perhaps my articles that I read are obviously just one particular position, but they seem to show that monopoles were less subject to damage, uh, in severe tornado situations. And I'm being very general in my conversation, but, and I, I haven't read extensively, but I'd sure be interested in finding more about this. Uh, I, I don't really have a objective analysis, all I have is, what I've looked at is really kind of one side.
Question I have, Mayor. Okay. I don't think there's any answer for you on that one, but you're just bringing up a point. Thank you very much. All right. Any further discussion? This is a little bit like instant replay in football.
Does the-
Uh, just a second. Would somebody like to ask the appellant a question? Anybody want to ask the appellant a question? We decided that our process tonight would be if somebody wanted to ask. Did, uh, and I will ask then, uh, Mr. Shimon, do you have something that is extremely relevant?
Yes.
Please come forward.
Thank you for inviting me back here. The most important thing I heard the attorney for American Towers say is, it was his opinion. He said, "I believe the BZA was not influenced by what was said during the hearing."
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just-
All right. Discussion or motion? Don't all jump.
Your honor, I move to return it to the BZA for further analysis on some of these points that have been raised.
Discussion, honor, or motion, or a second on that motion? Seeing none, that motion fails. Is there another motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to uphold the ruling of the BZA.
I have a motion to uphold the, the decision of the BZA. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to uphold the decision of the BZA. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just, um, some of the reasons for, for this motion, in my opinion, is just the information that was presented to us. And in these type of situations, council is limited to things that it can review, things that it can't understand, and the information presented to the BZA at the time. So from what I'm seeing, I know one of the points that was brought up by the appellant was misleading or false information regarding the insurance. Based on my viewing of that hearing and the information presented by the applicant in November, I, I, I understood it to mean that it would, like for like, they would be covered by the insurance for the original structure built. Anything above and beyond that cost then would be on the applicant to put in itself. Um, I, I don't think the extra money, in my opinion, really plays a factor. It goes back to some of the things that we've done as a city and some of the things that the Board of Zoning Appeals has already allowed to stand. They've allowed companies to go back to their old, the buildings under prior zoning, and they've worked with them on these certain things. So to me, it's keeping things in uniform with what we've done already. Um, this, based on the conversations that I've had with staff, it doesn't seem that the monopole structure is less safe. It doesn't seem like we'd be at a performance disadvantage or a technical disadvantage. So to me, it's just very, looking at the facts as they lay, and I think, um, I think the Board of Zoning Appeals, um, I would uphold their decision based on those facts.
Any other discussion? I have a motion and a second to uphold the ruling of the BZA. Uh, we don't need a roll call, do we?
Unless someone requires it.
Pardon?
Unless someone asks for one.
No. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Abstentions, motion carries. Thank you. There's no easy out on this one. All right, next on the agenda is public hearing Z dash nineteen dash two.
This is an application filed by Brooks Forns, twenty, twenty-eighty Byers Road, Dayton, Ohio, four-five-three-four-two. The application requests a rezoning of six point two-nine acres of land from I dash one Light Industrial District to O P, ORP-one Office Research Park District. The property is located on the north side of Executive Drive, approximately two-hundred feet west of the intersection of Oak Court and Executive Drive. The property is further described as Book Two, Page Six, Parcel Twenty-two on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Is there an applicant present tonight? Please come forward. Give us a name and address, please.
Hello, I'm Brooke Forns. My address is two-zero-eight-zero Byers Road, Mayimisburg. Um, I'm here representing the owner of the land. We're the real estate company that's trying to sell it, and, um, currently it's in an office park with some quiet offices, and the zoning that it's under allows things like car washes and, um, a lot more that just would not go with the look of the park. Um, the owner has sold all that land and this is the last piece, so I think it's kind of his, uh, forever loyalty with everybody else that it gets rezoned so that no matter what happens to him, um, whatever goes there is going to be appropriate for the park. So this rezoning is just to make sure that that is always appropriate. Thanks.
Thank you. Staff, have a presentation, please.
Yes, Mayor, I'll be brief, but as Ms. Forn pointed out, this is an initiated request on their part. Uh, they're representing Mr. Henkel that owns the property. See if I can find the- Just for reference, this is the property that we're talking about. This is Grange Hall, um, thirty-five. This is Executive Boulevard, it's an Apple Valley Business Park. So, as you can see, as Ms. Forn pointed out, this is the last remaining piece to be sold back there, and, and this was a office park that was started by Mr. Henkel. And, uh, we think this is a positive in terms of the permitted uses that are associated with the current I-one zoning, as opposed to the more restrictions that are on the ORP-one zoning that will, will ensure, uh, that the integrity of the park is, is in place moving forward. Uh, but if you have any questions, this is a straight rezoning, so there are no conditions of approval, it's just, uh, everything will default to the planning, I mean, the zoning code in terms of the, uh, regulations on an ORP-one district. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Public input. Anyone present this evening that would like to address council on, uh, this application? Seeing none, we will move on to council input. Let's start on the other side. Councilmember Curran.
Don't have any comments right now, your honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
None, thank you.
Councilmember Rushin.
No, thank you to the applicant. This is pretty cut and dry, um, just, uh, course of damn business. No, I have questions.
Councilmember Bales.
If I understand correctly, uh, Mr. McGrath, uh, there's been, uh, no development interest, it's just, uh, rezoning to try and attempt that interest in, in a different way?
Uh, it's-
Restrict some, some things from the prior zoning?
Yeah, there is, uh, the, the interest has kind of, has been in uses that may not be ideal back there. Um, I think it was mentioned in the staff report, there's, uh, like, uh, animal daycares and, and things like that, but there's been interest there for that, but there is no specific interest driving this rezoning request other than, um, Mr. Henkel's interest in protecting what uses go in his park.
Excellent, thank you.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Uh, no.
We don't get this very often when we have a down zoning, so to speak, uh, lower zoning, so this is a, a pleasant surprise in a lot of ways. Uh, all right. Uh, do I have a motion or further discussion? Either one?
I will move ordinance twenty-oh-one to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance twenty-oh-one to the second reading. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries, thank you. Next is public hearing, PUD nineteen dash one, specific site plan number one.
This is an application filed by Chuck Springmeyer, thirty-two, thirty-three Newmark Drive, Mayimisburg, Ohio, four-five-three-four-two. The application requests approval for a specific site plan to allow for the development of a credit union and retail structure on one-point-six-three acres. The property is located at fourteen-sixty-four and fourteen-seventy-four North Fairfield Road, further described as Book Five, Page Five, Parcel One-twenty-four on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Is the applicant present this evening? Please come forward.
I'm, uh, Chris Reaster, I live at two-one-six North Maple in Fairborn. I represent Danus Building Construction and, uh, the Credit Union. I don't have a presentation to give, but if there's any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Very good, thanks. Staff, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. The case you have before you is PUD nineteen dash one, it's the, uh, International Heart Versus Credit Union Specific Site Plan. It's the first site plan, it's the only site plan that's gone through on this, uh, is PUD. Uh, they're looking specifically to build a six-thousand-square-foot multi-tenant building on a little over one and a half acres. A project's located north of the intersection of Dayton-Zenia Road and North Fairfield. It's actually just on the southeast corner, or near the southeast corner of Lance Road and North Fairfield. Uh, this is a closer aerial photo. Uh, it's where the, uh, the Beck and Sons Tractor, uh, store is currently located. There's a few houses and some, uh, outdoor storage area, uh, and some parking area associated with the, uh, PUD, uh, at this time. So this application would represent, uh, the demolition of all the structures and, uh, on-site. So if this would move forward, then everything that's out there existing would, would be raised and, uh, the new building would be put in its place. The zoning code, the zoning map actually hasn't been updated since the rezoning, which was just, uh, late last year. Legally, it's zoned to PUD, the, uh, the area in yellow is PUD, it just hasn't graphically been shown on the map, but, uh, the, the PUD currently is this, uh, yellow area here. Um, one of the, um, and this is an outline of the, uh, site plan I'll show you here in a second, but just, uh, one of the conditions is, uh, because they're proposing to put some, um, area, some construction outside the PUD boundary, one of the conditions that they rezoned this portion here, which is currently zoned R-one-A, uh, and add that to the PUD because of the, uh, there's some, the drive-through for the, uh, ITM as well as some of the driveway is back here, as well as the dumpster. So one of the conditions should this move forward is, um, that they get that rezoned, uh, that portion, and actually, uh, on Wednesday, I have a planning commission for that rezoning application. So they do intend to move forward with that. Uh, seen here is the proposed site plan. Included in it is two access points on two, uh, main roads. One, and the, the main access point will be off of North Fairfield Road, it's about two-hundred-and-fifteen feet south of the Lance Road, North Fairfield Road intersection. Uh, they're showing a full access point with a left turnout and a right turnout, as well as a full in. In terms of parking, um, and this one was a little challenging because our parking requirements are based on use, and while thirty-six-hundred square feet of the proposed building will be the bank, uh, the credit union, we can calculate the number of parking that's required with that, but because the, the northern tenant is an unknown use right now, um, they're building, assuming that, uh, that's going to be a retail which requires less parking, um, which, if it's a, a retail, general retail in a bank, it would require twenty, twenty-nine parking spaces, they show thirty-seven on the site plan. However, if they go with restaurant in this, um, that requires a bit more parking because of the more intense use, and, and restaurants tend to be used around certain, uh, kind of a condensed timeframe, so they'll be required to have more parking. So there is a condition, at this area here, you could see to the east, or to, yeah, to the east of the building, it's kind of highlighted, uh, should that go as a restaurant, then they'll be required to add additional parking, which would bring the counts up to, um, up to fifty-two or, or more parking spaces, so they would meet the minimum. But that, that would be a condition, um, of approval, and we have also conditioned that, in the meantime, that not just be a gravel area, that they have to seed and sod that, so that's a grassy area instead of some future expansion area or looking like a gravel or, um, an excess area. We want that to be grassed and seeded in the meantime. Um, one of the conditions that Planning Commission asked for was, um, you can see on this northern portion, because this is a two-way street on the north end of the building, uh, if you were to try to pull into these parking spaces and they were full, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have much of a turnaround area, so they, they requested, uh, that this parking space up here be striped as a no parking area and that it be, uh, added as a turnaround area so that a car could pull in and turn around and come back out if, if there weren't available parking and they didn't see it till the last second. So that's a condition in your proposed motion for your consideration. In terms of the building, again, it's a six-thousand-square-foot proposed building, uh, they're looking at a single-story building, um, and you can see the, the two tenant spaces are divided by distinct architectural features. Uh, most of it is a bay, uh, I'm sorry, gray and beige ephes, as well as red and brown brick around, uh, the floor elevations, and you can see that they, they have similar materials on all four sides, but they do carry, um, architectural features on all four sides, so there's no apparent rear to the building, so it is four-sided architectural. And you see, they provided some 3D, uh, renderings of how that, that building will look, and again, there's going to be like a, a gray, uh, light gray, almost whitish hue to the Credit Union building, and then the, uh, red brick around the, uh, proposed future tenant area. I know they labeled that coffee, but there's not been any, uh, discussion about a coffee shop going in there. Um, this is just another angle, uh, of that, and you can see, uh, they do have the architectural features carried off all four sides of the building. Uh, they do show a good amount of landscaping, we had them add in evergreen trees down here to the south so that, um, you know, any of the properties to the south, cars coming down the driveway, their headlights wouldn't shine, but there is, uh, you know, there, the majority of the traffic will come in and go to the north rather than to the south, but, you know, there is an opportunity for people to come down south, so we did have them add evergreen trees along the south property as well as along the east, uh, property, uh, helping to screen the proposed detention pond from the south, uh, property to the east. One condition we did add was, you see, um, it's kind of hard to see on that plan, let me get back to, it's huge. Just to the north of this proposed site, they are going to be constructing a driveway access point out onto Lance Road, and, and in order to do that, they're going past an existing house, um, and there is already parking spaces out there, but when we have this opportunity, we, we added a condition that they wrote, they provide a hedge row along this parking area or this driveway to help, uh, screen this already commercial area, um, from a residential area to the east. So that is a condition in the proposed resolution, I'm sorry, proposed, from a, proposed motion for your consideration. One thing that they're proposing is a ground sign out front, but we didn't get any more details of that, so we added a condition that they're allowed one ground sign, and it'd be five feet tall, uh, twenty-five square feet per sign face, is typical size and, and scope from what you'd see of a business, it's six-thousand square feet, so we didn't want to, uh, give them any bigger or any smaller, so that's one of the conditions. We also added that, uh, that they have a one-foot base and wrap around the, uh, the sign, and the brick be used to, uh, construct the building, is the same brick that they'd use around the base and sign, that adds to the attractiveness of the sign. Uh, they're proposing two wall signs with this application. Um, again, because they don't have a specific tenant, we just added size-wise on the, uh, on the northern, uh, northern tenant spot of eleven feet by two feet, so it's a twenty-two square foot wall sign, and then they have a fourteen-foot by six-foot wall sign for the credit union. There are twenty-five most, uh, conditions in the motion for your consideration this evening. Uh, both Planning Commission and staff do recommend approval of their request, and I'll be here to answer any questions following the public hearing.
Thank you. All right. Public input. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address council on this application? Please come forward. Uh, please limit your comments to three minutes. If you think you're going to be longer, you can ask one of somebody in the audience to donate time.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Bruce Gwenden. I represent Saint Luke Parish and Saint Luke School, uh, preschool through eighth grade with three-hundred-and-fifty students at fourteen-forty North Fairfield in Beaver Creek. We were a little surprised at the planning meeting, uh, to see that the site plan, uh, was talking about retail spaces in addition to the original credit union. And where this impacts is the proposed uses. We are concerned that the current proposed uses- We are concerned that the current proposed uses next to a school currently include a bar, microbrewery, brew pub, carryout for beer, hookah bar, a tattoo parlor for these retail spaces that may later be occupied. We don't think these are appropriate next to a school. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on. This is council input. Councilmember Garcia, you have any comments?
I'm first.
You've got, I'm mixing it up tonight.
All right, put me on the hot spot. If just someone from staff could just briefly address Bruce's point, I do understand the concern there with St. Luke's, I know there's another preschool, childhood education across the street, I know there's a lot of construction going on in that area. As far as how the conditional uses are allowed, can someone from staff just talk to the fact that this is, these are standard, are these standard with the type of area that's allowed for this, just to kind of go over that a little bit?
Yeah, I believe there was effort put into this uses to be similar to what was approved at the PUD across the street, where the Dunkin' Donuts is found, and where the Dayton Children's facility will be going. We'll have to go back and look at those, but obviously, right now, the use is already approved by legislative acts, so the approved uses listed, are the approved uses moving forward, there's not a mechanism to change that this evening, but we'll look at that. We thought that the uses were reviewed in, by St. Luke's at that time when we were rezoning across the street, but we can definitely go back and look at that, and we can work with the applicant and see what we can come up with, but they are typically, they're B2, those are all B2 uses, which are community-oriented, like neighborhood community businesses.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the explanation. That's all for me.
Councilmember Rushing.
Thank you. If Mr. Burkett or staff could address, wasn't quite clear in the pack, at least to my eyes, where the proposed entryway to the, what's designated as commercial area right now? I saw a lot of renderings of photo, I mean, windows potentially.
And you're looking to, you're looking, where's the?
I'm sorry, the entrance to the business.
Oh, I'm sorry, it'll be up front here, and then there's some rear entrances, rear accessory entrances out back, but the main entrance will be here on the front sides of the building.
So this, being speculative, if this was a restaurant, the main entrance would be through the west side, it would not have access on either side, or is that a potential? You know, could someone enter that location from the east?
This is intended to be, I mean, they're looking, they designed this so there could be a drive-through window at this location, so.
But those two entrances there, one there, one just?
Yeah, these would be more employee parking is what they're looking at, and secondary access, I mean, the primary entrance is going to be here in the front of the building, and really, 2,400 square foot for a restaurant is, I mean, you're kind of limited in the types of tenants and the size of the restaurant, I mean, that's pretty small for a restaurant when you include a kitchen facility and stuff like that, so I think if they go restaurant, and that's why they designed it this way, they intended it to have like a drive-through pickup window for a small coffee shop, or something like that. I mean, I'm not saying any coffee shops go in there, but again, at 2,400 square feet, I mean, that's, you're really limited on the, I guess, the impact of a restaurant would have.
And I would just encourage, as staff always does, to work with the applicant, also the neighbors in the area, especially with the concerns brought to us this evening. You know, we want to make sure the best use is possible, but, you know, being good neighbors is important too, and I know staff continues to do that, so, thank you.
Councilmember Bailes.
Mr. Burkett, you put together a very nice presentation, thank you very much. The only question I had was about that rear access drive, will that be fully curved all the way, adjacent to the neighboring residential property?
They're going to need to put curb in, yeah, they're going to tie in, they're going to put some new landscape islands here, but yeah, they'll have a barrier curb.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Carr.
Question on the distance requirements, now, the state has distance requirements, I think this was, the gentleman was concerned about bars, et cetera, different types of things, there's already mandated footage requirements in certain areas, correct?
I mean, that's not something we regulate at the zoning stage, I mean, that may be something with their liquor permit, I'm not aware.
I understand.
So, I don't know that off the top of my head, what those distances would be.
I see.
That it, sir? Vice Mayor Adams?
I think most of the thing's been answered, the one question I have, though, is at the front entrance, over here with the two outs and one in, that's going to be leveled off a little bit, as someone who used to go there quite a bit, there's a big dip there, and it really, if you try to do it too quickly, you can bottom out, I don't know if that's going to be adjusted or what.
Yeah, they're going to, they're going to grade it, so that, I mean, it's not going to be, I mean, obviously, it's going to be slight, slight change in grade, but, because the site does sit below the road, but, I mean, they'll level that hump out.
And how do you think that'll affect the traffic flow with that extra light going in down here for children's?
I mean, they're going to have, they already have the existing turn lanes, and with, you know, two lanes of traffic, anybody going right, you know, there's opportunity for people to go around the traffic, so I mean, for a, a business of this size, I mean, it's not, I mean, it's not a huge business, especially compared to the 40,000-square-foot Children's Medical Center, so, I mean, I think it would have negligible impact on traffic because of the left turn lane, the middle lane for the left turn to go, if you want to go in, and then there's also, you know, two, three lanes on the east side of the road.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can you, you had a more clearer slide of the traffic flow, and you got those two lanes to the north, and I understand that one of them is quote, possibly for a drive-through. That is, that's just a little mind-blowing, trying to get people to follow that traffic That doesn't seem to, that doesn't seem to seem odd, I mean.
Originally, they had, you can see they moved the ATM, or it's an ITM in this, in this particular standpoint, out to, further out, originally, it was on this side of the building, and we were scratching, how you'd make two drive-throughs work on two different sides of the building without them hitting each other. That's why we had them add this island here, it's a sidewalk from the, this back door throughout to the parking spaces here, so to act as a barrier between this future parking field, as well as this, this drive-through lane, it's double, two-lane, one-way drive-through lane. And I think with adequate signage, as well as this island here, I think that, you know, people will figure out where to go, especially, this will be, it's kind of hard to see, but there's going to be, if this parking lot does get built, there's going to be a landscape island here, so this will be a, basically a curbed entrance almost, to this back drive aisle, and then there's also a landscape island here, and then this one will also be landscaped as well. So we are, we did have them design it, so if this back parking lot is built, then there's a lot of different points where you need to stop to get into that drive-through lane in the north.
Okay. All right, that was, I mean, it just seemed a little odd to me, but I guess the user knows what it is he wants to do with it. I do hope that we at least revisit the PUD just a little bit and see, make sure that we not, didn't leave anything open too far, I mean, St. Luke's have some good points, but again, so do you, about size and that sort of thing, so.
Mayor, Council, I pulled up the staff report, and I recall the limitations, and I think, I think Planning accepted all these, these are the exceptions, no brewery, no drug and alcohol, no heating air, plumbing services, no heating air, plumbing stores, residential cleaning, car rental, moving trucks, veterinarian kennels, or animal hospitals, so.
I think it was drug and alcohol rehabilitation centers, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
They said drug and alcohol rehabilitation clinics overnight, yeah, those appear to be, so there were some limitations placed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else? Mr. Mayor, just one point. For the ITM lane going north, would the ideal traffic flow for someone to go through that to continue north to exit the site?
I mean, I guess that's going to be a call of the, depends on which way they're going after they leave the site, if they're going to go down Lance, yeah, they're going to want to go north, but I think if they're going to go on North Fairfield, they're probably going to go around the building and.
So there'll be no signage there to encourage?
It'll be adequately signed in every, I mean, we'll make sure that, you know, our engineering department has a really good look, once the plan gets finalized, before we release a permit, they look at the, you know, the final construction drawings, make sure the signage is adequate, to make sure there's not traffic confusion.
Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion?
Go ahead.
Ah, we got to read this one.
We got to read this one, yes.
Yes, we do.
I move for the purpose of taking administrative action approval of a specific site plan for the International Harvest or Credit Union on the basis that the City Council finds the facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials, and modifications, amendments, and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and criteria for a specific site plan as per 158.066 of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required of this approval shall be as follows, which are 25. I further move that this motion with all conditions be fully recorded in the minutes of this council meeting.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve PUD 19-1, specific site plan number one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions, motion carries. Next, moving on, Resolution 20-01.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee, the Financial Administrative Services Director, to request advanced draws upon the amounts collected by the Green County Auditor for the City of Beaver Creek 2019 Real Estate and Personal Property Taxes collected during calendar year 2020.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, this is our annual resolution directed to the Green County Auditor to release our property tax funds early, instead of during the settlement period, it usually settles once a year, one, one time in March, the other time in August, this resolution allows him to release the funds early, we start getting it in February and July, and it creates a cash flow issue, and we usually make some more interest on, by getting it a little bit early, so, I think this year, we probably gained about 10 or 11 grand by getting that money in there a little bit earlier, and again, last year, he sent over six advanced draws for, to the tune of almost $14 million, so, this legislation is required to be submitted to him to allow them to do that for us, so.
Thank you.
Have you answered any questions?
All right, are there any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 20-1.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 0-21. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is Resolution 20-02.
This is a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council, authorizing the city manager acting on behalf of the City of Beaver Creek, and in concert with Beaver Creek Township, the Green County Commissioners, and the Green County Engineer, to enter into a debris reduction and management services contract with Begley Tree LLC for debris removal services, for which the city's financial obligation under the contract shall not exceed the sum of
Mr. Thonero.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, we're before you again, actually, on this topic, we were before you once in November of 2019, we have had a couple of changes to accommodate the desires of our partners, as well as the contractor. What we've looked at is addressing the total dollar amount and increasing that amount, so as we do not have to predetermine what that reduction factor is going to be of the overall debris, that eliminated quite a bit of discussion. Additionally, we've also included the tipping fees, those were originally going to be paid directly to the facility, now they will be paid without any additional cost, straight through to the vendor, and then finally, the contract clarifies the billing that would actually occur, how that will happen with our partners, so that we don't need an additional agreement with our partners in the county and the township. I do want to highlight, while this dollar amount is higher, the city, the county, the county engineer, and the township will only pay for what is actually ground hauled away and tipped, so, we don't anticipate that our overall cost is actually increasing, but it allows us to accommodate some concerns that were raised as we were starting to address the contract. Finally, I'd like to thank Mr. McHugh for helping spearhead some of this work as we negotiate with both the county, the county engineer's office, the vendor, and the township in this process, so, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Please.
It has been a tedious process, it was like watching a table tennis match, the ball kept going back and forth, and whose court is it, and then it's asking who's on first and what's on second. You know, I would see every email go back and forth, back and forth, prosecutor, us, you know, the engineer, environmental services, I mean, it was, it was a rough thing to keep, but I appreciate our partners in working diligently through that and reviewing, and Mr. McHugh keeping up with it as well, so, you know, in the end, this is what government's about, you have the engineer, the township, the city, the county, environmental services, you have all these partners that are coming together on this contract. It just took us a little longer, but the final result, I think we will be pleased with, it's a good rate, better than we would have gotten in July, which we were kind of shocked, I think we were a little bit blessed by, well, a lot of people were blessed that there wasn't a major hurricane that came through, which helped the price, because if a hurricane would have came through, we would have saw an increase, because they would have been busy down in Florida, Texas, Louisiana. So the process was good, I appreciate, I do want to reemphasize that the dollar amount that you are seeing is inflated, that's kind of the worst-case scenario, once we have the reduction factors, and what we actually pay for is what's in the back of the truck, I'm hoping 60% of that cost, hopefully, maybe somewhere around there, so, we did in our annual budget, budget enough, so we do have the appropriation already in place, so we don't have to add budget at this point in time, but we will only spend what actual ends up in the back of the truck, so, I appreciate the council and the township and the county's patience on this, as we've worked through the process.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question. Did you anticipate the tipping fee to be as high as it is, and now, instead of just being a pass-through, rolled it into the contract, and so that larger number didn't shock you?
Correct, the larger number didn't shock us, we, we, actually, by talking to the vendor, our tipping fee actually went down a little bit from what it was when we first passed this resolution, but rather than us paying the location that we would actually be tipping it, we're paying it directly to the vendor, because we'll be doing the monitoring, and we'll be best placed to determine whose chips those are, so.
Is any of this, or is all of this eligible for FEMA reimbursement?
Yeah, good, good question. The federal government will reimburse up to 75%, the state will kick in an additional 12.5%, and the total cost will be, to the taxpayers of the City of Beaver Creek, will be 12.5% of our, our total share. That, to be very clear, we pay 100% upfront, and then we'll be submitting for reimbursement for those federal dollars and state dollars.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion? I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 20-02. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Extentions, motion carries. Next is liquor permits. Captain, you're on the spot.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I do have two liquor permits this evening, the first one is for Dahlgen Midwest LLC, they're doing business as the Dollar General store, number 20435, located at 3865 Dayton-Zenia Road. Zine Road. And we completed the required checks from the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, on the applicants, the shareholders and the officers in the application. And we are recommending this application move forward without any comment.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I motion to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
The second permit that I have this evening is a new D1, D2, and D3 permit for Harbor Beaver Creek Management, doing business as Harbor Chase of Beaver Creek, located at 4175 Indian Ripple Road. And again, we completed the required checks by the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, and there were no issues or concerns for the officers and shareholders on the application. And again, we recommend this application request move forward without any comment.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I motion to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Decision items. We have to make a decision. We have 10 applicants for the vacant seats on council, and we normally, in the past, have set up a committee to review those applications and narrow it down a little bit so that we don't interview every single person. First of all, I'd like to know, does this council feel with 10 applicants, do we still want to have a committee to narrow it down a little bit and review? I see some nods. So I would like to make a recommendation, and I would like to see the committee consist of council members Garcia, Rushing, and Vice Mayor Adams. Does anybody have any comment on that suggestion? Do I hear a motion to appoint?
So move.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to appoint council members Garcia, Rushing, and Vice Mayor Adams to the committee to review the applications for the vacancies on council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Next is approval of council member attending Ohio Parks and Recreation Association. Mr. Bales, did you want to inform us of...
Sure. I would just like to inform the council that I would like to request reimbursement for attending the upcoming Ohio Parks and Recreation Association Annual Conference. I've attended this conference in the past. I think it's good for a representative of the city to be there. It's $325, and so I'm just asking for your support.
Thank you. Discussion, questions?
Will you approve, Your Honor?
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the expenditure requested by Councilmember Bales. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, authorize mayor to communicate with the Green County Commissioners, and I'm going to ask Mr. McGrath to address that real quickly, please.
Mayor Stone, just briefly, there is a... This is an association with some of the assessments and the bonds that were issued as part of the TIF for the Greentown Center. But to get the specifics, we have Mr. Montgomery here to represent the Green in terms of what they're asking this council to consider this evening. So I'll invite Dave up to the podium to kind of give you a synopsis of the request.
Do we need to go into what it is, or just...
I can just give you brief overview.
Right now, we're just trying to get in to create the appointment to...
Basically, what it is, is just a motion to authorize the mayor to act as representative of the city in the discussions pertaining to the refinancing of the bonds that were associated with the Green, the public improvements. These are county-held bonds, but they were about 20 years ago. Is that right? Somewhere around there before, yeah. They were issued at an 8% interest rate, and this is the first year in which they're eligible to be refinanced. The 8% is unrealistically high in terms of what you can get in a refinancing. So the county has to initiate the refinancing request. This allows Mayor Stone to act as a proponent for them to do that. Obviously, some of the benefits, I think the Olshon Properties and the representatives have, I think, assured the county that they'll cover all the refinancing costs, so there won't be any costs associated with the process for the county. This is just to show them that we're supporting that the effort be made to refinance these bonds at a lower rate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to authorize Mayor Stone to communicate with the Green County Commissioners and County Administrator about restructuring of certain debt originally issued by the county in connection with the development of the Green, and to present, as required by law, any such proposal to this city council for formal consideration.
Second.
I have a motion and a second as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, and I will abstain since I'm being appointed. So motion carries. Thank you. Next is council time. Councilmember Curran, would you like to start us off on council time?
I don't have a whole lot to say. I've been in a hospital getting this knee replacement. You get a chance to do anything for a while.
Glad to see you.
Councilmember Bales.
Thank you. I've just got a few points. I promise not to be as long as Zach's farewell speech, or the city manager's State of the City, but...
Get it in while you can.
That's right. I'd like to welcome Police Officer Warren Edmondson to the team. I appreciate his willingness to serve the community. I'd also like to welcome Senior Center Supervisor Tyler Barlage to the organization. I got a chance to meet Tyler at the welcome reception for him last Friday, and it seems like he has good experience and a lot of energy to lead our senior center, and it's a pleasure to get to know him. I think that I read three of our parks are getting new playgrounds this spring, and so I'm very excited to see EJ Nutter Park, Saville Park, and Stafford Park getting some improvements for our community. And speaking of springtime, tomorrow's weather is supposed to be in the mid-50s, so maybe it's a good time to check out the Beaver Creek Golf Club and play around. And finally, I just wanted to say that I'm very proud and honored to have been elected by the community. I want to thank my family and friends for standing behind me and providing me guidance throughout the campaign, and I know that being an elected official is not an easy task, but depending on what side of the issues you're on, you know, we impact people in very different ways. I didn't get into it because I thought it would be easy, but I wanted to make a positive difference on the community, and I want everybody to know that I'm available to listen to them, and I will strive to do what's right for the community, and I look forward to working with the rest of the council for the next term. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rushing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo Councilmember Bales in welcoming two new staff members. Do you also want to welcome Vice Mayor Adams and Councilmember Bales to this council? And the only other comment I want to make is congratulate and recognize the Beaver Creek Township Fire Department and auxiliary for hosting their annual awards ceremony. I know Mayor Stone and City Manager Landrum were present on behalf of the city to recognize the efforts of the Beaver Creek Township Fire Department for the Memorial Day tornadoes, but also recognize that, you know, even though we may have different Beaver Creek City or Beaver Creek Township, we work as one community seamlessly, and that was tested from the tornado. But also recognize the Fire Department auxiliary, who adds a force multiplier, if you will, to having volunteers on the ground doing great service. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I just want to, again, echo the welcome to Officer Edmondson. I'm really excited to have him here. It's a little bit of a welcome home for him, since he grew up in the area. I think he'll be a great addition. So I wish him all the best. And then also welcome to our new Vice Mayor and new council member. I'm looking forward to working with all of you in 2020. It's a very different-looking board, or council this year, but I'm excited to be working with everybody.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams.
I'd like to echo the welcomes to Officer Edmondson. I met him over there at the police station a while ago. He seems like a really good guy, looked a lot of experience. Also, today, I was able to go to the wake for Chief Evers' wife's mother, and I would ask that you keep their whole family in your prayers as they go through this tough time. I had an opportunity to spend the weekend with the Beaver Creek High School Show Choir this weekend, spent about, seems like, 32 hours over there. As a stage manager, you're in it. We've got a great bunch of kids going to our high school. We really do. It was really a lot of fun to work with them. And I wanted to thank everybody in Beaver Creek for supporting me and my run for council. I certainly appreciate everyone that supported me, and I will do my utmost to earn your vote every day that I'm here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I would like to also welcome our two newest members of council, and looking forward to this upcoming year, and we'll get to know each other better as we move forward. But it's always a good time. I've enjoyed working with everybody on council, and I'm sure I'll enjoy working with you too as well. I'm going to keep my comments fairly short. I'm going to add them to next meeting, so it won't be quite as long, I don't think. But I, too, would like to also congratulate Councilmember Rushing, who was elected to the Township Fiscal Officer. So he will take that office the 1st of April, I believe, and then we will have another vacancy on council that we will be filling. So congratulations, sir. And I, too, would like to thank my supporters. It's been a pleasure serving on council and as mayor, and it's... I thank you for allowing me to do it again for another four years. So with that, we will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to echo that the Fire Department, the annual recognition, annual award, very nicely done. Congratulations to all the winners. It is nice to, you know, meet many more of them face-to-face, to talk to them. Great bunch of people, you know, really the servant's heart, and we definitely appreciated what they did during the tornado, but every day. So nicely done, nicely done. Congratulations to all the winners. Just a brief tonight, except for Councilmember Bales, I'll have to stay after to listen to a more in-depth report, but briefly, the electric aggregation there's going to be that the city has, that many, many are enrolled in. There's a new list coming out to those that are not part of the program but have recently, maybe were under contract previously. Letters will go out, they'll have the city logo on it. So it is an opt-out program, so just as we've been discussing, we've been in this almost two years now, coming up on it. For more information, if you get a letter, the letter has our website address on it as well to refer to. So on our website, beavercreekohio.gov, you can get all the electric aggregation information on there, more in detail, more explanation, and if anything, you can feel free to call. But just watch out for the letters if you're not already in the program. Just a real quick on one of the projects that's coming. We'll have many projects. 2020 is huge on road projects, but this is the one on Kemp Road, the widening between Grange Hall and Meadow Court Drive, the widening road installation, a curb, gutter, storm sewer improvements. That area, you know, has a lot of flooding, so this will help that, so both sides of the street there. So the improvement is anticipated to begin in May and June timeframe, and why we're mentioning this is if you already drive past there, you're already starting to see the contractor beginning. The Dayton Power and Light will be working on relocating utility poles. AT&amp;T will be working on relocating their facilities to make room for the road widening. So you already have digging going on, so that's what it is. If you are unaware, haven't been to the budget meetings or State of the City presentation, that is a major project that will be happening very, very shortly. Again, we already welcomed Tyler to the Senior Center Supervisor, so he brings a lot of energy, and I no longer will be the youngest one at the senior center, so he has taken on that role now.
No one's younger than he.
No one's younger than he is, no. That's... Just to keep everybody informed, United States Census, okay, it's 2020 now, so here it comes. Yep. March 12th through 20th, households will begin receiving official Census Bureau mail with detailed information on how to respond to the 2020 Census online, by phone, or by mail. And for additional information, visit 2020census.gov. We do have a representative in our planning department that... So you can call our planning department and ask for Randy. If there's a census question, he will get it. He is our liaison here in the City of Beaver Creek, representing us, and we will try to get you an answer if there's a question on that. We are closed on Monday. City offices will be closed Monday, January 20th, in observance of Martin Luther King Day. And as always, for non-emergencies, please contact the Beaver Creek Police Department at 426-1225. And that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Well, thank you. At this point, we move on, and it's citizen comment, and this is the time for citizens to address council on any issue they like. We ask that you could keep your comments to three minutes, and if anybody would like to address council, come forward and give us your name and address.
Hi there, Deborah Wallace, 304 Bell Watlin Court, Beaver Creek, Ohio. Beaver Creek Township trustee. I'd like to first congratulate the new city council members, Pete and Don for your recent election, and the mayor for his being elected as mayor, and Mr. Curran for being reelected. So I want to congratulate you all. Had a couple pieces of information I'd like to pass on to council. Today, at Beaver Creek Township, we have entered into a discussion with the Public Facilities Investment Company to build our fire stations and lease them back. So I have information here I'd like to pass to Diane, and she can give you copies, but as a city council member, I was very strongly supporting a new city hall and a new police station. This is a way the city can take on that debt by transferring it to another organization. You would lease it back, and you have many different options as far as interest rates and time to pay that back, so. Have you at least looked into that? Because I think, as we've all talked in the past, a new fire, police station and city hall is instrumental in bringing the City of Beaver Creek into the 20s and beyond. So, and with health reasons and other things that go on here, I think that it would be a fantastic opportunity for you to move forward on a different kind of concept. We also are starting to lease our fleet management, a new idea. We're saving $283,000 to do that. So looking at different things in different ways, I think saves money and provides savings to taxpayers, so just a hint. Wanted to have any one of you have any county issues, please let me know if you have an issue with the county that you'd like me to look into as I run for my next political office. I did have a question, or not a question, but a statement, in when the mayor was going to communicate with Green County Commissioners, I'm a little concerned that it usurped some of the city manager's administrative duties and Mr. Casera, and so I found that to be interesting and different, but just as a comment. As far as engineering in the City of Beaver Creek, as you know, the new road is being almost finished with Factory and Alpha Bell Brook and Chakertown. I just would like to make sure the city engineers keep an eye out on that. It rained pretty heavily last week, and the drainage ditch that they had that was coming towards Alpha Bell Brook, it raised pretty high. Any more rain, and it wouldn't went to that side of the road, on the northeast side of the road there, and I was just concerned, we've had so much flooding on Factory and on the southwest side of Alpha Bell Brook. So I just don't want the other side of the road to start flooding. So they may have to dig that terrain a little deeper to hold that water, because as it is right now, it was... It could be close.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you for bringing some new ideas. Anyone else like to address council? Please come forward. Give us a name, please.
Again, my name is Corey, 2408 Rolling View. I apologize if I give my last name, but due to the nature of my job, I prefer my last name and address not be out on public record. I'd just like to say I'm a little disappointed in the council allowing the billion-dollar cell phone company to be able to build a tower that is not up to zoning code. cell phone company to be able to build a tower that is not up to zoning code due to them having to spend more money. I feel it is unfair, although my garage may be over the property line, and it was built like that before I bought the house. It was like that when the previous owners built it, it was like that when the property next to me was purchased. So I just find it unfair that I'm going to have to spend additional money out of my pocket to have to move that garage, even though you're allowing essentially everybody else, it was damage from tornado, to rebuild where and as their stuff was, so.
So noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? In that case, we will move on. At this point, I'm looking for a motion to enter into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move to enter into executive session pursuant to section one twenty-one point two-two of the Ohio revised code for the purpose of consideration of the purpose of property for public purposes.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Rushing?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bales?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes, and for the audience at home and the audience here, there will be no action after this executive session. However, we will return here to reconvene and adjourn our meeting, but there will be no further action, so thank you very much.